Welcome, you know, I have to gavel. Welcome. Thank you all for joining us. This is our regular Town Council meeting, February 13th, 2024. We will do a call to order. Kelly?
Councilmember Henderson, here. Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Here.
Mayor Polavy?
Here.
Councilmember Kloostad?
Here.
And Councilmember Romack?
Here. Thank you.
Great. We will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. General Manager Sven Lef, I see you in the audience. Would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. With that, we are ready to take public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. You will have three minutes and please state your name before you give us your comments and make sure you hit the button on the right so it turns green. This is your chance. Negative. Okay. We will close public comment. Appreciate that. And we will move on to our first presentation of the evening. And I will ask Helmuth and Angelica to meet me up here at the podium, please. Nice to see you.
It is grand jury awareness month and this proclamation, we'll talk about that. So whereas grand juries are crucial components of California's justice system, and whereas grand juries have been in existence since the adoption of the California Constitution in 1849 and 1850, whereas grand juries are empaneled to act as an arm of the court as authorized by the state constitution, to be a voice of the people and a conscience of the community, and whereas, like other California counties, Nevada County has a grand jury composed of individuals who dedicate their time for a full calendar year to serve in the grand jury system. Whereas, the primary duties of the Nevada County Grand Jury are to investigate and report on local governmental operations to assure that the responsibilities are being fulfilled efficiently, honestly, and in the best interest of the public. And whereas, grand juries serve as a watchdog authority and are well suited to the effective investigation of local governments because they are independent bodies, operationally separate from the entities and officials they investigate, and whereas, it is appropriate to provide a designated opportunity to recognize the efforts of those who have volunteered and are volunteering their time and service to advance the work of the Nevada County Grand Jury. Whereas, the reward of being one of 19 grand jurors is the satisfaction received working with fellow residents of the county to improve local governments for all of us. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee that February is Grand Jury Awareness Month. And thank you very much for your service. And if you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, I do.
Please do.
Thank you.
You may take your proclamation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council, my name is Helmut Stonitski. I am a Truckee resident and serve as a juror on the Nevada County Civil Grand Jury in Nevada City. Should you ever have the opportunity to visit with us in our jury room, make sure to scan the pinboard because there, in the upper right-hand corner, you will find the jury's motto which reads, "Grand Jurors Do It in Secret," which is, of course, very appropriate because we all are sworn to secrecy for life. Yet, the requirement to deliberate, investigate, and write reports under this veil of secrecy also contributes to the jury's relative invisibility. You rarely read or hear about a civil grand jury, and yes, we do have a recruiting problem. The Town Council's proclamation today is therefore much appreciated in that it may help to shed a bit of light on the existence of the county's civil grand jury, hopefully stirring some interest in those who are curious enough to learn more. Therefore, on behalf of the members of the Nevada County Civil Grand Jury, I convey our thanks. Your support of our work is appreciated. Thank you.
And we will open it up for public comment or any other comments after we hear item 5.2 from our Town Manager, Ms. Cowboy.
I have no reports tonight, Mayor.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Oh, my gosh. You're banking so much time. Okey-dokey. Well, we'll bring it back. Any council questions or comments on the proclamation or Jen's lack of a Town Manager report? Anything on this side? No? Any public comment on anything that we've heard from? Great. Closing public comment. We will move right into our discussion, our consent calendar, excuse me. Thank you. On consent this evening, we have 6.1, minutes of January 23rd, 6.2, authorization to purchase a Ford Interceptor from the National Fleet Auto Group, 6.3, authorization to purchase two self-contained snow blowers, 6.4, claim for damages against the town, 6.5, approval of placemate contract amendments, 6.6, 2022 recess striping project C2003, notice of completion, 6.7, Riverview Sports Park Trail Connection Project, C2318, 6.8, West River Park Contract Amendment with Melton Design Group, 6.9, the 2024 Fourth of July Fireworks Celebration Event Sponsorship Request from the Truckee-Donna Recreation and Park Districts. One more. 6.10, the contract amendment with Civic Plus for website, design, and hosting. Would any member of the council like to pull anything from consent? Seeing none. Any staff like to pull anything from consent?
No, Mayor.
And any member of the public like to pull anything from consent this evening? Great. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent calendar.
I'll make a motion. We approve our consent calendar.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, consent is passed. Thank you very much. And with that, oh, cruising. Item 7.1, we have planning application 2023-00000142. And it is a lot line adjustment, I believe.
Close.
Close. Sorry. Recorded map modification. Excuse me.
In the same vein.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Polavy and Town Council members. It's good to see you. I'm here tonight with the 11494 Alder Hill Road Recorded Map Modification. And as Mayor Polavy mentioned, it's item 7.1 and planning application 2023-142. So, the applicant this evening is requesting to modify an existing recorded building envelope in final map 92001. The request is not to change the total size of the building envelope, but a slightly changed shape and location of some of those envelope lines to take advantage of a natural bench in the topography. In order to change a recorded building envelope, you must request a land use entitlement from the town, and that is a recorded map modification. We have a recorded map modification section that outlines procedures and findings that need to be made to change items on a map such as conditions of approval or recorded restrictions pursuant to the subdivision map act. This would be different. Sometimes you might have heard a certificate of correction. That's if someone just made a mistake and we need to change it. This is a little different. This is requesting a change that was recorded on the map, not a mistake. Examples include building envelopes, reducing any setbacks that are recorded on the map, or other restrictions that might be listed there. So, tonight, the Town Council's role would be to see if the findings can be made to approve the recorded map modification with or without conditions. The recorded map modification section in our development code requires a public hearing before the review authority who approved the tentative map. This one's a little different. In fact, the tentative map was approved by the Nevada County Eastern Planning Commission prior to the Towns Incorporated, but a subsequent amendment to the tentative map. And then the final map was approved by the newly formed Town Council. So, staff brought this to kind of the final review authority to make this decision. And we are talking about a almost 20-acre parcel in Alder Hill Estates. This is zoned rural residential, one dwelling unit per 10 acres, and it is currently vacant. So, here's where we kind of get into the map. In 93, the council approved the final map. This kind of little picture on the right is the majority of the map. There were 160 acres subdivided into 10 parcels. Each parcel was given a building envelope denoted here. So, that's actually on the map, which is why we're here tonight. And then tonight, we'll specifically be talking about parcel nine. This is the current building envelope on the map. And as you see here, this is a note from the final map. These buildable areas or building envelopes, development envelopes, like the terms used interchangeably, is to ensure that building excludes riparian areas, slopes in greater than 30%, and any easements that were put on the map. And as you see in the bottom corner, it says that it could be relocated with approval of the town of Truckee. So, this is what the applicant is requesting. The red line is the current building envelope, and the blue line is the requested modification to the building envelope. The envelope stays the same size, so just about five acres. In the subdivision map, and may I go back a slide here? Not really easy to see, but here on parcel nine, you'll see that there's some kind of cross shading, and this is as good as it gets with our files. But these are the 30% slopes. We're kind of, we're moving my mouse around. So, according to the subdivision map, this change would not delve into that 30% slope area. And they're looking at GIS data. There are no streams, blue line waterways, no riparian areas, and the easements are denoted on the map, and there are no easements in that area. Just to ensure that staff is correct in this, a topographic survey is going to be required of the new building envelope to confirm the slopes. And if staff sees, you know, if there are any 30% slopes that pop up when we get kind of this better topo survey, staff will have the building envelope be modified to ensure that there's no developable area in that 30% slope. So, we'll move on to findings. For the fourth finding for the map modification, the project or the modification needs to be consistent with our general plan. This will be with our 2040 general plan. And the, I picked a few sections where it shows consistency, land use, clustered residential subdivisions, clustering, building and development to avoid slopes and wetlands and water features. In our community character policy, we have prohibiting development on steep slopes and using the natural landscape. Preservation of steep slopes kind of says it for itself. We're staying out of that 30% slope area. And minimizing erosion and sedimentation, we are lessening the excavation and the cotton fill by using the natural topography and maximizing the retention of kind of the natural state. So, staff finds that the map modification would be consistent with our general plan. And here's the full list of findings. The yellow ones are kind of easy to go through, so I'll run through them quickly. The modification isn't imposing an additional burden on the owner of the property. The owner of the property is requesting it. The modification isn't altering any interest or title on the map. It's just simply changing the size of the buildable area. It is consistent with the development code as long as we make the findings that we've laid out this evening. There are no fines, co-compliance issues. There's no nonconformity on the parcel. There will be no increase in density or dwelling units. We're still allowed to have one dwelling unit for this almost 20-acre parcel. And it is consistent with previous SEQA documents. The final map had a mitigated negative declaration. Nothing that we're changing here affects the SEQA determination for that. There's also an exemption available for small, like lot line adjustments and map modifications. That's the exemption that staff is proposing this evening. So, kind of double-covered, if you will. And then, I think the most important finding is that the modification is consistent with the intent of the original map. And that's where we want to make sure that there's a reason that the building envelope was placed on the map. And if we're going to modify that building envelope, we want to ensure that the intent behind it remains. It's staying close to Alder Hill Road. It is avoiding the slopes riparian easements, and really should be decreasing disturbance on the site. And then the final one is that the change that we're making would not take that map and contain anything that would allow us to deny the map as a whole. And some of these items that you could, grounds for denying the map could be inconsistent with the general plan, which it is consistent, not being physically suitable for the type and density of development. We're staying rural residential, single family. There's no change there. The proposed improvements should not be causing any serious public health or environmental damage. And the hope is that it'll actually limit any kind of environmental, or it would limit any environmental issues with reducing excavation and the need for cotton fill. And those are the findings. We have received no public comment. And so, staff is recommending that the council adopt Resolution 202409, approving the following actions based on the recommended findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And then it is determining the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to 15305, minor alterations in land use limitations, and approving the recorded map modification. As always, council can choose to take some alternative actions. You could continue to date and time certain to request additional information. You could add, modify, or delete conditions of approval. You could deny the project on the basis that the findings cannot be made, or you could require additional environmental review. And that is it for me this evening. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thanks, Chantal. Appreciate it. Great presentation. Any questions on this side of the dais? Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Chantel, it looks like the buildable area is pretty much in the southern portion And then the GIS map, is that the one with the one-foot elevations, the one-foot contours?
Is your mic on, Chantal? Is your mic on?
It is not.
Nice.
I believe it's two-foot. I believe that the new building envelope will be encroaching in any steep slopes, but he will be sending us an actual survey.
Okay. And why was it, staff didn't just go out and do a little preliminary looksee?
So, the part that is changing is quite a ways off the road into the wilderness, and, not the wilderness, but into the forest. And honestly, I'm not a surveyor. I'm not qualified to determine 28% to 20% slope. So, I would want to leave that for the professionals.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Kloostad, nothing. My only quick question, but I believe you answered it. This isn't a planning commission issue because council actually approved this back in 93?
Three.
93. That's like the first faction.
Yes. Traditionally, this wouldn't come to you, or, you know, it would go to planning commission. But I think my take on it is because the amendment came in, right, when the town incorporated, and I'm not sure what our planning commission looked like at that point.
Sure.
Town council made that amendment approval.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
This might be the last one you ever see.
Awesome. We will open up public comment on item 7.1. If anybody has a public comment, come on up to the podium. Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back for any council deliberation and/or a motion. Councilmembers, Zabriskie, you had the most questions, so you get to go first. Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
I don't have any objection.
Great. Anybody else have anything? How about you give us a motion there, Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
I move we adopt staff's recommendation determining the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15305 of the SEQA guidelines and approve the recorded map modification.
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Passes. Thank you. We are going to move on to item 7.2, the, to adopt the Town of Truckee Reserve and Designation Policy and Sustainability Designation Savings for fiscal year 2022-23. Nicole Casey, take it away.
Mayor and council members, we're excited to present the first formal reserve and designation policy for the town of Truckee, as well as the sustainability designation ongoing funding proposal. As a background on the town's reserves and designations, the original reserves policy was adopted as part of the town's fiscal policy. It compassed about five bullet points in the policies adopted in 2009. They've been informally updated annually as part of the budget process. And today, we're presenting the town's formal reserve and designation policy. What is a designation? It is an amount that councils expressed for a specific purpose. It is different than a restricted resources, which is constrained by external groups such as creditors, legislation, or constitutional provision. Future councils can reallocate designations with an additional resolution. So, these are not permanent funding allocations. We can't do that with a designation. Just want to make that clear because we did get a public comment on that. So, for everyone's information, this is a council resolution and can be fixed with, or changed with additional council resolutions in the future. Where do designations originate? They are set-asides of operating surplus. The operating surplus is calculated by taking operating revenues, less operating expenditures, less debt service. And if the funds are not set aside in a designation or contingency or a reserve, it becomes part of the fund's unassigned fund balance, and that's available for future council prioritization. So, you could prioritize it for the same purpose that you didn't reserve it for this year in a future year. It just becomes available for council prioritization. What are uses of designations? This is intended for use as one-time funding. This is not intended for ongoing operation costs. Typical uses include infrastructure, one-time studies, limited-term programs, or purchases of large capital items such as fleet vehicles. This is the list of the current general fund designation balances. As you can see, we have a lot of different set-asides in our general fund currently, our largest being our general fund contingency designation, and that's supposed to cover us in the event of like a catastrophic kind of failure. It also acts, I don't know why I can't talk this evening, I'm sorry, but it kind of also acts as a, like a cash reserve for us, so we have cash when we need it during the year because our cash flows are kind of unequal. They come to us in the form of property tax twice a year, or, you know, or monthly. So, that kind of provides us with operating cash flows as well. Now, we get to the most exciting part, which I know everyone was here for, which is the sustainability designation. The original purpose in the budget was defined as for use on meaningful and substantial, gosh, could I use smaller words here? That would have been great, sustainability projects that can help reduce the town's greenhouse gas emissions. We did include an expanded purpose in the actual formal policy that was attached as to support the town's efforts to achieve the 2017 climate action and energy goals as detailed in Resolution 201758, as well as the implementation of the Climate Action Plan element in the town's general plan. This is obviously just our first stab. If there's desire to make that definition something different, we can, that's up to council. And what we're proposing for the ongoing savings plan is that we would set aside 5% of the general fund operating surplus if the operating surplus is greater than $5 million for that year. And the calculation of operating surplus includes debt service but would not include capital outlay for that year. Theoretically, the capital outlay is being made from the unassigned fund balance from the prior year. So, that's why we don't include it. And that would give us a proposed balance for fiscal year 2223 of 1.52 million. We also wanted to touch on the future of the overall policy. We do, in the future, want to address the CFD fund balances and the enterprise fund balances. They're informally addressed right now as part of the budget process, but we'd like to spend some time thinking about those and formally addressing them in future versions of the policy. And also think about if there's any other funds that we need to look at. And then we would also bring this policy back for periodic review as part of, probably as part of the budget process if there needs to be future updates. And with that, I'm going to open up for questions and put the action in front of council.
Thank you, Nikki. Much appreciated. With that, we're going to move to council questions. We'll then have an opportunity for public comment, just like on all our agenda items, and then we will bring it back to council for deliberation, just so everybody is clear. I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kloostad. If you have any questions, now is your chance. I bet.
All right. Thank you so much, Nikki.
Hopefully, you can ask me with small words because I can't say words today.
I think we can manage this. So, and thank you, staff, for all the responses to the questions ahead of time and including the survey data. It was very good to kind of refresh on that. And so, I did. I took a look at some of that survey data, just to remind myself what our community has been prioritizing. And then, there was also a piece that was really important, I thought, at the end of one of those attachments, ACA 1, in that it restricts any tax measure that's passed at that lower percentage, the 55%, if it passes. That those funds must be used for the funding of construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or replacement of public infrastructure, affordable housing, or permanent supportive housing, or the acquisition or lease of real property for those purposes. So, based on the things that you included in the staff report that we've used this money for, rebate matches, pilot program for TART Connect, greenhouse gas emission reductions, diesel conversion, are any of those qualified if we were to instead try to access a fund for sustainability through the vehicle of ACA?
Good question. Our current understanding of ACA 1 is that it is not allowed to be used should a measure pass under that for operations. So, TART Connect, for example, would not be eligible for ballot measure funding that passed under ACA 1. The example of the diesel conversion, that might be infrastructure, depending on what we're talking about there. But services and ongoing services are not funding opportunities.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Councilmember Romack, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. So, Nikki, you mentioned in the questions too, that typically this is for one-time capital funding, not programs. You did just mention it for designations. You said limited time programs. Could you give an example of something, like what would be a limited time program versus an ongoing program?
So, like the lease-to-locals pilot program, when it was a pilot program, we could designate, we could use designation funding for that because it's not an ongoing. We don't have an ongoing commitment to that program. It's like pilot programs that we're testing out, we could certainly use that for. You just don't want to commit, you don't want to create an ongoing funding requirement with a one-time pot of funding because it's obviously not going to be available at some point. So, you want to, you want to make sure that you have an ongoing funding source for ongoing programs and a one-time funding source for, like, one-time programs.
Another example would be your water bottle filling grant program. That's a limited duration. duration. It's fairly small, but.
I think another example was we did use some of this designation funding for the pilot program of TART Connect when it was a pilot operation.
Thank you. And then I believe this was answered in the questions, but kind of you were talking about a potential ballot measure. We haven't done a next round of polling that we asked for, so we could potentially ask questions around sustainability or ideas around that if we were interested. We haven't started that yet, correct?
Correct. And it could also come out in the other. Oftentimes, there's a response for other, and they delve into what that means.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Henderson.
I have, I think, just two. So I just want to confirm, Nikki. So the process, if in future this council or a future council wanted to actually reallocate the designation, it would simply be adopting a resolution or an amended resolution? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then just sort of following up on that thread of what it could be used for, what it couldn't be used for, could it, for example, be used for Truckee's next greenhouse gas inventory, which we committed to as part of our climate action plan? Is that a one-time thing or an ongoing thing?
Yeah, you could designate it for use on the greenhouse gas inventory.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Zabriski.
I'm trying to remember some other ways we've used the sustainability designation money in the past. Hasn't some of that gone to the trail ambassadors, you know, under the Keep Truckee Green program?
I believe we funded the trail ambassadors from general fund and the solid waste fund.
Solid waste was part of it, yeah. Okay. And the other part was general fund. Okay. Can you tell me, how did you land at the $5 million surplus minimum?
I knew you were going to ask that question. I can't tell you that we have a mathematical formula for landing there. We typically try to have $5 million of cash on hand in the financial forecast going out, so I stuck with that standard.
Okay. Because I was looking at the historical operating surplus and then what we projected for the future, and they seem like they almost, the balance, the...
It was...
I'm sorry, it looked like it was coming out almost at an average of $5 million.
No, it was not that mathematical. It was sticking with our targets for our out years in our financial forecast.
And then in terms of our financial forecast, it does look like we're seeing a declining net surplus over the years. And I remember we've had this discussion before. I remember part of that is attributable to the increase in funding for CalPERS retirement, but there was something else as well. Do you recall why we're seeing a declining net revenue?
It's primarily due to our conservative estimates for payroll, which are our largest costs. So some of that is CalPERS. We do project a 10% increase in healthcare costs every year. We've seen that happen every year recently, but in the past, that hasn't happened because that's what we've negotiated in our MOU. So we want to make sure that that funding is available. It doesn't always, it doesn't, we don't always use it, but we want to make sure we budget so that it is available in the instance that we do have to expend it. So it's a combination of CalPERS benefit costs and, you know, payroll increases, just wage increases.
Okay. And then when we do a new budget, we're actually, our estimated actuals are actually take us back to, is it February?
We develop the estimated actuals because right now we're in the middle of developing the budget for fiscal year 2425. So they're creating their estimated actuals now. Obviously, they have incomplete information because we still have five months of the year left. So they're doing their best calculus estimates of what we think is going to happen. And, you know, last year was really hard because we were in the midst of snowmageddon, and we didn't know if it was ever going to end. And so they are projecting to keep their seasonals on a lot longer than we typically do and have a lot more consultant support for snow removal than we actually ended up needing. So they were a little bit high last year. That extra balance rolls into the surplus and becomes available for a future council prioritization.
And then how long after the end of a budget year do we have the final figures for our revenues and expenditures from the prior year?
Our goal is to have them to council at the first meeting in December. We've, we're training our staff as quickly as possible. I think we have the best team we've had in a really long time, but government accounting is crazy hard to learn. So we're hoping to have the final numbers for council. We've been presenting unaudited figures. They're pretty close to actuals. We're hoping to have those in, I think, the first meeting in March.
For the end of the prior?
For fiscal year 2223, yeah.
Okay. So at that point is when we do a final determination of whether we've exceeded the $5 million surplus?
We've presented the unaudited figures, so we are proposing that we would add 591,000 to the sustainability designation.
And then if those numbers change, we would adjust that designation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
You certainly may, Councilmember Romack.
Since you just put those numbers up, the 936,000 that's in the designation right now, I know we've talked about various ideas, how to utilize funding. Are we kind of thinking of specific things at this point that we would utilize that funding for? I know that's a budget discussion with council and whatnot, but remind us all.
I would say we're not far enough into our budget development to give you specific examples, although we do know we have a funding gap for TART Connect. So if we are going to continue that beyond the June 30th, your long pilot phase, this might be an area that we will look into, depending on what the budget's looking like.
Okay. Yeah, just a few questions for me, and then we'll open up public comment. Do we have any other designations that have an automatic trigger like what we're talking about tonight?
The contingency designation is equal to 40% of general fund revenue. So we automatically increase that every year because we want to make sure that we have enough to operate. And obviously, that target keeps increasing every year. So that is the other one that we have automatically funded.
And did we do that by resolution? I know that years ago, it was only 25%, and then we upped it to 40 after the Paradise Fire, I believe. Was that resolution-based, or was that just sort of agreed upon in our normal budgetary context?
We adopt a resolution as part of our budget adoption, and so we informally included the designation funding as part of the budget resolution. So it was like one page in the budget for those that were really interested.
Good.
I think that's why Nikki was clarifying. This is the first time you've really formalized all of these reserves, even with if you choose to add the sustainability one or not. It's just a more formal process that in the future, if you want to rescind it or another council wants to change it, it's rescinding just the resolution for the policy or changing that versus going back to the whole budget.
Just the resolution for which particular policy? The, just for the sustainability designation or for the whole?
Yes, you would revisit the reserve policy and the resolution for that.
And that's a standalone policy, just like the...
As we're proposing here.
I see. That was going to be one of my questions, so maybe we'll come back to that.
Just to clarify, I think we might be miscommunicating. The sustainability designation is part of the resolution for the whole policy. It is not separate. So should you want to change any of the designations, you would rescind this resolution, edit the policy, and adopt a new resolution?
Okay, great. Because that leads to my, I'll make it my next question, just so we stay on topic, which is, in plain speak, I guess, you know, what are we, what are we doing with this policy in practical terms? So as far as I understand it, and I just sort of maybe need it dumbed down for myself, we've sort of done this informally in the budget process. And what this is going to do is codify all of these designations, what their purposes are, and potentially any changes that we might want to put on them tonight, obviously, because we can edit this particular policy tonight. And what is the, what is staff's goal, I guess, in having us adopt this policy versus working through it on a annual or in council-by-council basis?
I'll take that one. From my perspective, it's a transparency issue. It's much more transparent to point to a policy versus go find it in a 400-page budget document. I think it's also cleaner and easier for you to discuss any of these designations with a standalone policy again versus revisiting the whole budget and having to bring it up in that context. We would still include it in the budget as a reminder, but it's not necessarily the formal adoption mechanism.
And so that's sort of where, when we in the past have talked about like the road maintenance reserve, if we were willing to go from five years to seven years, that would be an example of a policy amendment or not necessary, or what would that entail? Should we make a decision like that in a future budget because we needed to free up dollars for a public works project somewhere else?
I would view that as an update to the policy to reflect what your direction is.
So that would be an update to the policy, so...
Which would mean a new resolution, and we would bring that back.
Every time. And I also just want to clarify, because I took a little bit of maybe liberty with Councilmember Henderson's statements of simply adopting a resolution. I don't know that we ever simply adopt a resolution. I mean, a resolution like this took two-plus years to get in front of us, for example, right? So maybe what would that resolution adoption edit actually look like? Because I don't think it's just like, hey, I want to adopt a new resolution next week. Can you make sure that gets back to us? You know, give us a little timeline of how long it takes you guys to actually edit and adopt a resolution if we were going to make changes in a budget process, for example, of taking the road maintenance reserves from seven years back to five years?
The answer to that question depends on what you're trying to change. If you're saying, take it from five to seven years, that's a pretty easy update that we would hear at some point during the budget conversation, I assume. And that could come back pretty immediately, potentially at the time you adopt budget, if we hear it early enough, maybe as a separate item. But that's a pretty easy change. If you want to talk about your reserve designation philosophy as a whole, like that's probably a conversation, and we come back with some iteration of what we think we've heard, and you could discuss that. So that would be a longer process. You could use this as kind of what you do with other programs and have it be a stepping stone and say, this is the start. In the future, we might want to set targets that maybe, or ranges for different designations that you're within the 30% to 40% range for your emergency reserve, for example, and you're comfortable if it's in there. There's lots of different pathways with this. This would just be the start.
And because, because this is going to come off the work plan, I'm assuming, after tonight, depending on what happens tonight, it would not also be simply just an adoption? We would all, three of us, need to say, hey, we want to get that back on the bike rack? And then in the work plan, and as we all know, that can be upwards of a two-year process at this point, correct?
Again, I think it would depend on how big of a change you're looking at. So if it's something small, like, oh, we want to change the streetscape from 1.25 to 1.5 as part of the budget because we had a flush of cash, you know, that's something we can easily do. If it's like, hey, we want to look at an ongoing way to fund this designation, we're probably going to need some time to kind of do some math and figure that out.
Great. Do any of these designations currently have a cap of any sort on them? Either figuratively, as in we've had side conversations about it at a budget meeting, or being contemplated in the policy in front of us?
The 40% one is sort of a cap.
Sort of a cap, right.
I think as, in the past, council has kind of said, oh, we have this cash available. We don't have a project ready, but we know that we really want this cash towards, to go towards streetscaping. And so we've kind of done these one-time designations, so that we really haven't had to focus on a cap. There hasn't really been a need. That's not to say that, you know, if we went towards, oh, we want, we want to shoot for something that's in a range, then we would kind of explore caps more.
And just so I also understand the methodology around this. So for example, I believe one of our capital improvement project is like the building decarbonization program coming up, right? So that would get funded through the CIP program, potentially, and would be excluded from being counted towards a $5 million surplus? Or how would that work, I guess, for example?
So in that example, if you, and if you think of our housing programs with Measure K, all of the housing programs either say funded with the housing designation or Measure K, the building decarb would likely be proposed to be funded with the sustainability reserve, and then it would work out. So it wouldn't hit general fund in the sense it would be the one time unless it was an ongoing. Want to clarify anything? So would not, go ahead.
It's basically like we're using previous year savings versus the operating surplus. So it would not count towards the operating surplus calculation.
Got it. Because it would have been allocated in a prior year, basically. Right. Okay. Got it. I think those are all of my questions right now. Anybody else have any questions before we go to public comment? You sure can? Yeah, on your mic.
In the proposed policy for the pavement fund, the road maintenance reserve designation, it says the council proved an increase to 1.25 million annually. And, but when I look at fund balances, the balance is much higher in the road maintenance.
You're right. I should have mentioned that one does have ongoing funding commitment. So we save 1.25 million in the pavement, in the road maintenance reserve every year. And that amount was determined as part of the pavement maintenance program, and they do update that program periodically. They fund that first from their restricted sources, which include the sales tax measure and state funding sources. And then the projected funding balance is, is supposed to come from the road maintenance reserve. And so we figure out how much we would need to be saving annually or spending annually on that to meet our projected road quality measure, right? Yeah.
And while we're putting in 1.25 million a year, the balance is going up and down because we may not, we'll spend more or less each year because the pavement's on a longer cycle.
Correct. So they, they don't pull, it's not equal amounts every year. Like, they may have a big year where they pulverize a bunch of roads, and we spend a lot of money.
Of course. Thank you. And actually, I had one more quick question, too, because I forgot to ask it. The general fund housing designation was originally funded in 2016, 2017, if I read the staff report correctly. I believe it had allocations after that as well. Did it, did it not?
I believe you're correct. I think as a later council decided to add to that designation, they just added a million or whatever it was of general, unassigned general fund, fund balance.
It was half a million when we were doing all of those different funds at that point.
Initially, yeah. And after the 2 million for housing designation.
Correct. Yeah, no, I remember that. So I guess what's, we're just keeping, these are just there. So we're just keeping them. That was, we didn't really like filter any of this to say, hey, this should move over here. I mean, we just sort of took what was already in the budget and said, here's what we're going to start with, was versus putting something into more of like the Measure K bucket. I know that Measure K is only accounted for internally, not externally, but saying, hey, this is now our housing spend, or this is now where we're really utilizing some of this money more specifically.
Yeah, this, we, I mean, the direction from council and how this landed in the work plan was to have a sustain, ongoing sustainability funding source. And so this was what we could come up with in lieu of a tax measure, or perhaps in addition to, but without having a dedicated tax measure that would qualify. So stepping back, we took a little bit of liberty in thinking that we should formalize everything if we were going to have more formalization around the sustainability. So we didn't try to filter, we had not heard the... So we didn't try to filter, we had not heard there was interest in eliminating the housing designation or creating any other designations. We just tried to formalize what was there and offer you the sustainability designation.
Great, thank you for that clarity. That was clearly, I had lots of confusing questions, so thank you for answering them prior to the meeting. Okay, any other questions? And you'll have another chance, obviously. So with that, we'd like to open up item 7.2 for public comment. You can come on up to the podium, make sure you state your name, three minutes, green light on the microphone, have at it. There you go, thank you. Hello, and make sure you state your name.
Hello, my name is Caroline. I have just a quick question to make sure that we're on the same page. I know we have a lot of climate activists in this council here, and I just want to make sure that none of these funds are going to be appropriated when we have projects for sustainability that we, I know you got, a lot of people here have consultation businesses, and just want to make it clear that there's a line that is drawn between contract, government-related contractors in this town and the sustainability funds that I know is really being pushed by the council members here.
Caroline, we're not going to answer any questions. You have the full three minutes to use, so keep going. We'll answer questions maybe afterwards, but we're not going to have a conversation between the public comments, so you got three minutes.
Okay. I mean, I don't really know how to ask it technically. I know this is pretty technical language that you guys use, but essentially, I just want to draw the line between, make sure it's really clear in whatever budget that allocations that we're doing, that there's no intermingling, I guess, of government advisors and so forth that are getting these funds. That's all.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Stand on up, don't hesitate. Come on up.
Hello, thanks for your time. Chris St. Martin, and I guess I'm more curious around why this being the first thing to actually put a designation to. From everything I just overheard, it sounds like there's no other designations for things like housing, specifically when that's such a large issue in our community. But yet, we're going to choose sustainability to drive a certain percentage towards that being the first specific thing. So I guess from my standpoint, it seems like there's more immediate needs to really drive the focus of financial or fiscal responsibility from the council towards, rather than sustainability. And I'm kind of curious, what was the driving factor to create this to be the first thing that we're going to create that, other than the 40% for the general funds, which is understandable? And there's so many other things. It sounds like from comments that Dave had, we haven't increased the amount of money for housing. And, you know, why aren't we? Why aren't we having that conversation a lot more? I mean, I have a hard time with employees at some of my businesses who have moved out to the, out of the area to Reno or other areas that are driving an hour plus. So what can we do to focus on getting those people back in our community so that we can sustain more of an, I want to say neighborhood community, rather than more of a commuting community? So that's my one focus.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, seeing none. We will be closing public comment. Thank you to both of you for your comments. And we will bring it back to council for deliberation and some direction moving forward. Yeah, Jen.
Mayor, would you like us to respond, just so there's clarity on the contract issue? Because I think that's broader than just
Sure.
just this topic. I'll let our attorney.
Yeah, so as Ms. Lee was talking about, state law does not allow the town to contract with any council member, any business owned by a council member. No town dollars can go to a council member in any kind of contract setting. So that's just not something that we're allowed to do, and we look at that very, very, very carefully. We would never, ever allow that to happen, if that's what you're getting at.
Thank you, Andy. Cool. All right, and yep, you're going to go first, so don't worry.
Well, I was going to ask a few more questions.
Oh, you got, yeah, you can do both, go ahead.
Nikki, I know this is kind of off the cuff, but hopefully you know some of these numbers, just in response to some of the concerns expressed. How much does Measure K generate every year approximately?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry. But let me pull up the budget really fast.
Our question and answers earlier, wasn't it?
Measure B and Measure, I responded with Measure B and Measure R.
Oh, okay, measured.
Yeah, because the question was on sales tax and Measure K is TOT. So she can pull that up. We can also, if there's interest in pulling up the draft policy, which might speak to Mr. St. Martin's comments about the different designations, just to show you that there are some, there is an initial designation for housing. Why that wasn't, isn't proposed for ongoing is because of Measure K, and all of that money goes into housing. But there's others as well, so if that's of interest, we can pull that up on the screen.
Yeah, and so while she's looking at that number, how much of that funding generated by Measure K is used towards our housing?
And if I can just interject, I know Measure K was originally anticipated to annually bring in roughly $700,000. I think it was actually more than that the first couple of years. Yeah, so we're bringing in about $1.2 million of Measure K revenue every year, and that has only been used towards housing projects and programs. That is an ongoing funding source, so we can use, we'd use a little bit of that towards operations. About $100,000 goes towards funding staffing, and then the remainder goes to, is projected to go to capital. It has only been used on housing projects.
Great. And is, is that the entirety of our town staff commitments? Are there other commitments aside from the about $100,000 a year?
There are some staffing, housing staff members that are funded from general fund.
Okay. And just to, to make a comment on that, we have taken our role very, very seriously in supporting workforce housing in our community, and it's been our top priority ever since my, Mayor Polavya and I have been on council. And I think the amount of programs that we've created and supported and piloted and expanded upon are robust. And I believe we're doing really everything that we can, and we say yes to everything that staff brings to us that will further housing. So just wanted to make that statement. Any other comments on that?
I agree with you.
Well, I guess it does sort of raise a question. I don't know if we have these numbers handy, and if we don't, it's fine. But how much funding did we direct to our housing programs in total this past fiscal year?
So I also want to just make sure that we're not putting competing topics, like this isn't necessarily like a tit for tat of like, oh, we spend X on housing, so we're going to spend X on sustainability. We have roads, we have a million other things that we, that we are responsible for. I understand if it helps you get to the sustainability issue of what we are looking to designate, because...
I think for me it does, only because it's not, certainly not a one-to-one. But we also have to recognize that if we put funding somewhere, we don't put it somewhere else, right? So we have to make those decisions.
Yes.
So that was why I asked the question.
Yeah.
And I'm specifically trying to respond to St. Martin's question.
Yeah, 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 no, I think we were there, I just didn't want it to, we're not like trying to like compete against one versus the other. I just wanted to make sure that that's not what we're up here to do tonight.
So we, I don't have an exact figure of how much has been spent in the five-year budget that we developed for fiscal year '23, '24. We had 16 million projected for housing efforts, and that includes everything, or from the housing element to the ADU pilot program, to the rental assistance programs, to town assistance on developing land for housing. So that's kind of like a wide breadth, but 16 million over five years.
Any other questions before we move to deliberation? No? Okay. Councilmember Klosstad, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Polavya. Yeah, I do have a few things that I would like to say about this. So as I referenced earlier, we've done a lot of surveying of our community over the years for various reasons, and three things always rise to the top. It's fire risk, workforce housing, and the environment. These are the top priorities of our community that they want to see the town of Truckee tackle. So we've been responsive to that, and our community in general has. So I'm really grateful to our council and the community for supporting Measure T, which provides predictable, sustainable funding sources to tackle the massive fire risk that we have in our community. I'm also really grateful to our council and our community for supporting Measure K, which we just talked about, and it provides substantial, predictable, sustainable funding to tackle our severe housing crisis and challenges. And we will eventually go to the voters to renew Measure R, which is a sales tax, and that will, again, continue to provide predictable and sustainable funding for our roads and trails. Our community has consistently supported this in the past, and so has the council, and I'm very grateful. So I'm here to try to tackle that third tier that shows up in all of our surveys and that we have as one of our council priorities, to be environmental stewards. And we took this role really seriously, and we passed a climate action plan that has a lot of very specific goals that are going to take funding in order to accomplish. And so I'm here to ask the council to support the sustainability fund designation, to show our community that we're listening to them, that we hear them, and that we will continue to consistently prioritize protection of the environment, which in our, one of our surveys garnered an 83% support rating. That was in 2021. And most recently, an 84% extremely and very, very important role in our town's priorities as our community sees them. So I don't think we are going to pass a sustainability tax that we could use to do this sort of work with. We have other measures that we need to focus on to support other priorities that are also designation funds. And therefore, staff's provided us with this option, where we will set aside funding when and only if there is surplus for this high community priority. And as with any program, it's, our sustainability program, its success is absolutely determined by their ability to plan and to know that they have funding and to know when they're going to have funding in order to accomplish the climate action plan goals. And our, our responsibility, our statutory responsibilities, to meet our greenhouse gas emission reduction requirements by the state account. So I think that this is, this has been a long time coming. I've been working on this ever since I got on council, and ever since that first half-a-million designation. And I always had a dream of we would create a sustainable, predictable, consistent funding source for this purpose, that as we see with housing, we do not see an end in sight of its need. So I'm urging my fellow council members to support this designation. I think what staff did in terms of, so, or putting everything in there for us to have that transparency is really important. We have committed to transparency to our community, and I think this does that. It's all in one place, it's really clear, and we have the ability, as we do with every policy that we do up here. We are willing to and consistently embracing change and updates. So if there's an update that we want to make to this in the future, I think we've determined the policy and the procedure to do that. And I'm really hoping that we have support, unanimous support for this resolution. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments, appreciate it. Councilmember Romac.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Klosstad. First, I do just, to the questions around financial interests, and I know our town attorney answered that, but in transparency sake, just again, we all have to fill out financial documents every year, so again, transparency, you can see what people might be invested in or working on, and how, what the town is investing in and working on, and how those don't, you know, go together. So just for your reference, you can always look that up if you ever have questions on that, that it is public information. Okay, but now to the topic at hand. I, you know, to your comments, Councilmember Klosstad, we know in the environment, sustainability, combating climate change are priorities for our community. You know, we hear that in surveys, we definitely saw public comments regarding that. Finding, you know, ongoing funding available to this, I think makes sense. We know that these are costly. My concern about moving forward with this general fund designation at this time is we are doing some additional polling on a potential tax measure. And we want to understand if the community first is open to supporting that, and if so, what would they be interested in supporting? And so to your point, we have found that they often choose the environment and sustainability as priorities. So does it make sense to understand the feedback from the community on if sustainability and some of our transit services could all work together as a potential tax measure? Again, seeing what the voters have to say. So I think because we're going through that process right now, I would encourage us to utilize that next polling to understand how things could work together. I think we've discussed, if we're looking at microtransit funding, the full cost of microtransit in a year would be less than what we might generate in a quarter cent sales tax, so that would leave additional funding. This then would be ongoing, we wouldn't have to rely on if there was a surplus or not. Councilmember Zubrisky was asking about declining surplus, we would know that it would be there. So that would be my recommendation. I also, you know, was just pulling up the climate action plan, because as proposed, this designation referenced the, our resolution in 2017 about renewables, and also referenced the climate action plan. And there's so many things in the climate action plan that could work together in a potential sales tax measure that I could see, maybe it's something related to that to be able to find an ongoing revenue source for a multitude of actions, programs that our community would like to support. So that's where I'm at, at this point. I'd love to hear from my other fellow council members, too.
And just as a clarifying statement, just for both of you, Councilmember Klosstad, I think I heard you support both resolutions that are on our screen in front of us. Councilmember Romac, would you still, regardless of what ends up happening with the sustainability designation, are you in support of adopting the reserve and designation policy based on whatever changes happen to take place on the sustainability front tonight?
Thank you. Yeah, I do appreciate you clarifying. I do support a policy to town managers' comments about transparency. I do think that it does make sense for the community to understand what our policies are and having them as part of that.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, because we do have two parts of this tonight. I think you were next, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, I was just jotting down some notes here. So I, I really appreciate the conversation, and just sort of want to reiterate, we do have several different designations, and those are outlined in the staff report, just if you want more information on any of those. The general fund contingency, we've obviously talked about, but the general fund housing designation, the economic development designation, and several others. I think we've also talked through how we do have some stable sources of funding for some of the other priorities that council has adopted, and our priorities are right up there. It's really hard for you guys to read, they're really small, but on the break, if you want to go up there, I think those are a really good representation, just to see what the priorities are. I'd also say we've, you know, we have funded this specific designation previously. I mean, first, as Councilmember Klosstad noted, it was before, you know, my time on council, before Councilmember Romac's time on council, and then we added some replenishing funding to it, I believe, two years ago. I really want to thank the couple of folks who showed up to make public comment on this tonight, and I also want to acknowledge that we received, I believe, six other written public comments, two of which were public comments, two of which were opposed to it, I think largely due to the use of the term sustainability and how that's defined, and then four in support of funding this designation, largely focused on the community's sort of priorities in this area. I did want to just briefly address a comment that you made, Councilmember Romack, related to the polling. I think you're absolutely right. We have more polling that we're going to do. I'll also say, I think we've heard a lot of feedback from the community when it comes to our sustainability and climate-friendly policies and work. It's not just the polling, it's the outpouring of, you know, community interaction during the Climate Action Plan and process and all of the other opportunities that we've heard from our constituents who want to see, you know, us being that leader in environmental sustainability and stewardship. And then I also just want to note, you know, we're not certain at this point in time that we will propose another tax measure, and I think that's particularly important in light of current economic uncertainty, that we've passed three tax measures in just as many years, heightened costs of pretty much everything, from building materials to healthcare to groceries. And so I think it's important that we do have a stable funding source to achieve the lofty goals adopted by council and being that leader in environmental sustainability. We need that stable funding source to be able to plan, to be proactive, and to achieve everything that we have already promised to our community in the recently adopted Climate Action Plan. And truth be told, that was one of the parts of the general plan that received some of the most robust community interest and feedback through the, you know, years that it took to pull all of that together. I think the other very important component here is that the state is pushing us toward climate-friendly policies and the implementation of those policies. I would rather be ahead of that and have the funding set aside in advance so that we know how much funding we have, so that we can budget around that accordingly. And I recognize that, you know, there is a fiscal impact of this and that once funds are designated, they can't be used towards other uses, but also, it is good governance and it's best practice for government and good fiscal responsibility to make sure that we do have appropriate reserve policies set up. So I'll just end briefly. I think something that's exciting about this, to me at least, is that it actually crosscut several of our priority areas, and here are just a few from the cap, and these may be eligible for some of the funding through this designation, depending on the final shape that they take, right? Infrastructure investments, wildfire preparedness, transportation, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure projects, partnerships with the school district and other special districts, getting more EV ready or actually installing EV infrastructure, incentives for efficient building and builders, pilot programs, and so much more. And I think those are all things that the community has said they deeply, deeply want. So to end, I am supportive of this. I'm supportive of it as is. It's proactive. It ensures we are ready to implement all that we've promised our community. It's fiscally responsible. Jen, I do like how you said it could be a stepping stone for our other current and even future designations. And then I just wanted to end, because I think this may come up again, to Mayor Polavy's point, I'd be supportive of revisiting a cap in the future, both for transparency and accountability, but that really depends on what we anticipate these sustainability expenditures to be, and in the absence of that information tonight, I think it'd be imprudent to adopt a cap this evening. It'd be picking a number out of thin air. So I support what is before us this evening.
Thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Zabriskie.
I share Councilmember Henderson's comments. On the first part of this council action, adopting a resolution for a formal reserve and designation policy, I wish I had this in front of me even before I came on the council. This has cleared up a lot of confusion I've had about what these different designations are, and it captures, for now, within five pages. I suspect it might grow in future years, but it does provide consistency and transparency. I think it does help ensure fiscal stability and provide guidance to staff. Those are all benefits that I would like to see achieved through the adoption of the formal reserve and designation policy. In regard to sustainability, I do want to echo Councilmember Henderson's remarks. This sustainability projects, depending on what they are, can do a lot to help housing by reducing the month-to-month cost that tenants and homeowners face in paying their utility bills and reducing their other monthly costs. Buildings account for the largest share of our greenhouse gas emissions. It tends to be the older residences that have the highest emissions, where our service workers work, and that's where we can achieve the greatest greenhouse gas reductions, get the biggest bang for our buck that will benefit that portion of our workforce. So I see this as helping housing. My concerns are that whether we do a cost-benefit analysis, when we look at specific projects, making sure that we're maximizing the reductions for the amount we invest, and that's something which we'll address as we start addressing the projects that are funded out of sustainability designation. My other concern is, according to our budget, the operating surplus, while it's about $12 million for the 2022-2023 budget year, it's projected to go down to less than $5 million, which means we're looking at no allocations, no 5% allocations to a sustainability designation in future years. I just mentioned that as a caveat to the future. We're going to need to come back and visit this for that reason, along with others. How do we continue to sustain our sustainability designation?
Thank you. I think you kind of picked up a little bit of, or you left off a little bit where I actually want to pick up, because I agree with that, and I very much want to see a stable funding source for the projects that are identified in the Climate Action Plan, but I don't agree that this is the right method to do that for a number of reasons, one of which you just mentioned, because I feel like if we go down this road and we move this forward, then we are potentially hamstringing a potential future ballot measure that we are literally going to discuss in less than six months. So I think that's one issue. I also believe that it sort of pigeonholes that project work to say like, hey, we've already designated that, oh, but this year it got its funding for a few years, it didn't get its funding for a few more years, and therefore doesn't have the same type of attention placed on it in the budget process as we move through projects and things like that. So I'm a little bit unsure and suspect of using this as a way to make this happen for those reasons alone. I think there are others, too. One being, you know, I worry about future councils manipulating spending and budgets in any given year to make sure that there either is a $5 million surplus or isn't a $5 million surplus, right? I mean, there's a lot of ways that we head into budget processes to say, hey, I want to move capital improvement project A, B, and C up three years, and let's spend $15 million. And then all of a sudden, we don't have a surplus, and then there's no money, and then we're having these hard conversations about how do we fund something? Well, where there's a designation for that. There's no reason to fund it in this way or that way. To me, unfortunately, this method causes a bit of confusion. It causes, to me, it's actually uncertain, and I don't really support doing it in this way without a couple of things. You know, you bring up a cap. I think a cap is really important. I mean, I think it's important to have a cap. Nothing else has a cap, but we've also been extremely judicious in the way that we use our designations to say, well, there's enough there. We don't need to put more in there because we haven't spent it down yet. With having a sort of automatic designation, we have an ability that potentially accrues in perpetuity, and, you know, we don't have a way to get that money back without, you know, another act of governance, shall we say, or, you know, some other way. So to me, that's partially where I end on this. I also have a little bit of trouble with the language, unfortunately, and especially some of the language that you brought to the conversation. I agree with you. The top three issues are always traffic, housing, open space, environmental stewardship, whatever we happen to call it. I did just pull up all three surveys that Jen sent us. I didn't see the word sustainability actually listed in a single one of those polls. So on the Changes to Improve Truckee, higher sustainability standards actually doesn't show up anywhere. And this is part of the reason why I'm not super comfortable with this right now, is because I just like projects. I like things. I like a task. I want a list. Tell me what we're spending this on in the next five years, and maybe I can support it. And honestly, I will in the budget process. And that's where I think something like this gets done. It doesn't get done on the dais by creating a designation for work that we have in a plan, because we have a lot of work in a plan. We have a general plan. We have a climate action plan. We're going to do all of that great work, and we're going to fund it programmatically and project-based through the budget process. And that's kind of why we do five-year budgets, in my opinion. And I think we will continue to support that through our priorities. The problem I have really is it's just a little bit too vague for me with this at this point. Back to the language piece, when we talk about environmental stewardship, to me, that has always been limiting growth and development and creating more open space. And that is what Measure K is allowed to do. Measure K is a general fund. It can go towards open space preservation. It can go to sustainability, whatever that means to everybody up here and everybody in the audience. It can go to wildfire preparedness, and it can also go to paying our employees to pick up more trash or plow the roads. It can go to all of those things. And we've been really good about allocating it, and that's the model, and I think we've talked about this previously on this dais, that should we go to ballot with a general ballot measure in November, that is a model we will continue to use. What I haven't heard in these surveys or when people talk about environmental stewardship, I haven't heard them talk about, they don't use the word sustainability, at least in the listening sessions that I've been a part of. They use the word like, I don't want that development to go in next to me, or I want to buy more open space so that our community retains its rural character. And I think that's the problem that, to me, doesn't sit well with this designation. So I am not in favor of this designation. That is not to say I am not in favor of an ongoing sustainable funding source, and that is not to say that I don't support bringing it back through the ballot measure language, and that is not to say that I won't support something like this in the future if it is more fleshed out and has some more safeguards, it has some more parameters put around it. I can get behind some of those things, but I want to hear more specifically what it is as we move this forward, and if this does come back to us in the future, and I want to hear from the community a little bit more precisely what they mean. And I agree, the state is coming down on us in every single jurisdiction really hard, and it's probably going to come with a lack of funding, because almost everything the state does comes with a lack of funding, and I believe we do have to be prepared for that. And I want to be prepared for that through smart budgeting and knowing what's coming down the pike, the same way we do with our housing law, the same way we do with our Cal recycle laws, the same way we do with our waste management. We put it in, it becomes a project, and we budget for it in that manner, rather than this sort of triggering manner with no cap. So that's sort of my two cents on this. Does anybody want to add anything? Yes, please.
Can I go back to my first question, which was, my understanding of our upcoming survey is what we're surveying for a sales tax, correct?
A general sales tax.
A general sales tax that we would be looking to pass under the, at the 55% or above.
We don't know that yet.
Okay. But so the sales tax, if it was a general tax not subject to ACA 1, then it could be used for anything, right?
Correct.
But if it is subject to ACA 1, it could not be used for these types of things.
For operations.
For operational.
But I think we also had the conversation that even if the sales tax fell under special tax of ACA 1, specifically the activities of ongoing TART connect operations would not qualify, and that is why I thought we had somewhat abandoned that idea, but.
I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that.
And I think there might be support. I think I was fairly clear. I'm not sure you were precisely clear on your support for the designation or not. Do you support the designation of, this is specifically, I think we all 100%, 5-0, are going to support, Nikki, we need our resolutions, you took it away, our reserve and designation policy. I heard Councilmember Romack and myself being aligned with, we want a little bit more information, and we want to at the very minimum get through the ballot measure process and have a couple of questions added to hopefully inform this type of decision. I heard Councilmember Clove said and Henderson be ready to support the resolution in front of us, and I think Councilmember Zabriskie, you gave us both sides of the story and weren't necessarily clear, and I'm going to call on Councilmember Henderson really quickly, who wants to add something while you contemplate how you would like to come back into the table. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor Polavy. I just, there was a comment made that I just, it was very intuitive, and I just wanted to kind of highlight it a little bit. I think this is, you know, Councilmembers Zabriskie, or Vice Mayor Zabriskie, excuse me, I think you said it, our return on investment, right? Like what we're actually getting, and I think that we're constantly analyzing and reviewing results related to return on investment. We do it for our housing programs all the time. How much are we spending? How many people are we housing through these different programs? How many workforce have we housed? How many children of our workforce have we housed? For how long, right? All of these different metrics. And so I just want to say that I think it is obviously appropriate to do that here with this designation as, whether it's specific projects or to your point of a list comes down, that that's something that we always do. So I don't think this would be dissimilar. I just wanted to say that briefly.
And I agree with you. I think no matter what, however we spend the money, we're always very honest and transparent about what that looks like, and I think that's important to all of us. That's our duty to our constituency. That's not going to change by any stretch of the imagination, and that's what voting's for, you know, and that's what's great about it. Vice Mayor Zabriskie, sorry, where are you at on this?
As you said, I think it's 5-0 for the formal reserve and designation policy on the sustainability fund. I see our effort to reduce greenhouse gases as a multi-year project that needs a designated funding source. And I consider the sustainability designation taking us in that direction, imperfect as it is, and so I'm ready to vote for the staff recommendation as it is. But I'm also interested in understanding what you are suggesting as being even better than what we have here for purposes of providing that funding to reduce greenhouse gases. And I'm particularly interested as it affects housing.
A ballot measure? I think the ballot measure, a quarter or a half cent ballot measure provides certainty, provides predictability. So it addresses our constituency in a much broader manner, and it doesn't, it's not subject to repeal. It's not subject to necessarily a change in council. It's, you know, it has, to me, it's much more, it's much more, it's just a better, it's just a better funding mechanism than this.
So it seems to me we could adopt this tonight, and then if this goes on the ballots and prevails. And then if this goes on the ballots and prevails, we'll be able to revisit this designation and consider the use of this money for other purposes.
Agreed.
Yeah, I don't, and that's why I'm saying, let's wait till after the ballot measure. I think if this goes on now and we approve this, we are putting ourselves at risk from using that type of language in the ballot measure because then we're going to have the public, especially if it's a general, say, so now they want to fund this, that, and the next thing. But they already funded that. Why are we, why are we, why are we funding it again?
I don't see that as mutually exclusive.
I'm just saying.
Action designation, I don't really care. I know what we're going to do with this money. And I know all the projects that we have, projects, programs, policies, operations that we want to do. Because see, that's the, that's the problem for me is in the past, through the budget process, we have not refunded sustainability on most years because we hadn't spent it down because there wasn't a consistent funding source that they could count on in the future to plan those projects out. I think additionally, many of the things that we need to implement that we've identified in our climate action plan are not projects. They are not going to be CIPs. They are programs or policies. So that gets very tricky to fund and support, which is why I think this is, this is a start. I agree with Vice Mayor Zabriskie. It's imperfect, and I am committed to evaluating it in the future and improving it in ways that we can commit to in the future.
It sounds like we have a majority. I mean, we can go back and forth as much as we want. But also, in the interest of time, you know, I feel like.
I just ask a quick question.
You can, and then just out of respect, if you do, we are going to go to Councilmember Henderson, Vice Mayor Zabriskie. You are then going to close this out.
Perfect. Just, I just heard you say programs, important programs. It's my understanding this designation couldn't fund ongoing programs. We could do pilot programs.
I think, I think Anna was recognizing that. What I understood from what she was saying is that a ballot measure could be used. And so she's saying that we would still need this funding for projects because we would have to use the ballot measure for, I think that's what you were saying.
Okay. I still feel the way that I do, and I would prefer to wait until after we have additional understanding of what voters may support on a sales tax measure before moving forward with this.
Councilmember Henderson, last word.
Thanks. Well, I was just going to say, and I don't know if this alleviates any anxiety for anyone, but on the naming, I wonder if we do something to align specifically with our council goals. We use the term environmental stewards. And that's been marketing. We've done outreach on that to the community. Maybe it's the Environmental Stewardship Fund. Again, the name doesn't really matter to me because to Councilmember Clovestad's point, we, I think we understand what it'll be used for. But perhaps that alleviates a little bit of concern. And I just want to, I want to sort of just say, I am grateful for this conversation. I know we're not, you know, completely aligned on this. And I just, I want to end with, I truly believe that we have a moral imperative to preserve, protect, and steward this beautiful land that we all have the privilege of enjoying for work, for life, for recreation, for ourselves, and future generations to come. So I stand committed in my support on this.
Thank you. And I want to be clear, I support all of those things, too. I would also just mention, I am completely unclear on what we're going to spend this money on. And that's why I'm having a bit really tough time supporting it. Like, show it to me in a budget, and I'll support it all day long. Talk about it as environmental stewardship or sustainability, and I actually have no clue what you're referring to. And it doesn't work for me. And it actually doesn't make a lot of sense because I feel like we're just putting money aside that we haven't spent yet that we could be doing a lot of other things with, including accelerating many of our CIP projects and taking from other places like that. So I just want to be clear that I don't think it's abundantly clear what we are going to be spending this money on, at least from my perspective, so.
We can agree to disagree.
We certainly can.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie, please.
And I'm just reading the language regardless of what title we get it, give it, excuse me, the staff report, and then the policy itself says it's to, it's for meaningful and substantial sustainability, projects that help reduce the town's greenhouse gas emissions. So I see this as a greenhouse gas emissions reduction fund, based on the language.
And I understand that. I think that my reflection is Councilmember Henderson had kept talking about, she listed like six things that were in the general plan and the climate action plan. And to me, those are the six things that we already do in our ongoing operations. That's what I'm reflecting on. She was talking about bike paths and, you know, other activities. And I think those were some of the, you know, we reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That is a lens we put over everything we do, in my opinion, already.
Well, we have the climate action plan.
To guide us, absolutely. Would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. You're smart thinking. Yeah, sure. I move we adopt Resolution 2024-11, adopting the town's first ever formal reserve and designation policy, and also direct staff to save 5% of the general fund operating surplus to the sustainability designation as part of the fiscal year 2223 year-end balance.
And should we take those separately?
I was going to actually say that. I guess we can take them separately. So would you just mind amending your motion to take the first one first?
Adopt Resolution 2024-11, adopting the town's first ever formal reserve and designation policy.
Second. Discussion first.
Yes, please.
Because the resolution has the sustainability designation in it.
That's what I was, that's why I didn't stop him, but.
So I was going to jump in here. Why don't you do the sustainability designation one first? If it does not pass, then you could adopt the resolution excluding the sustainability one. If it does pass, then it's a mute point.
Okay.
I had no idea.
Yeah, sorry. I thought about that as you were talking, and then I was like, yes, separate it. But that's great. So.
This is my third amended motion.
This is your third amended motion. Proceed, sir.
And adopt staff's recommendation to save 5% of general fund operating surplus to the sustainability designation as part of the fiscal year 2223 year-end balance.
Second.
Okay. Kelly, roll call, please.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Yes.
Mayor Polavy?
No.
Councilmember Clovestad?
Yes.
Councilmember Romack?
No.
Thank you.
So motion passes. And now we will take a second resolution.
So I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2024-11, adopting the town's first ever formal reserve and designation policy.
And I will second.
And we'll go roll call again, Kelly.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Yes.
Mayor Polavy?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovestad?
Yes.
Councilmember Romack?
No.
Because this includes the sustainability designation.
It does, yes. That is okay. Excellent. We are good on both points. Thank you, everybody, for the very robust discussion. Thank you to the public for your comments this evening. I think it was, it was a great conversation, so thank you. And thank you, Nikki, for your excellent presentation and continued mathematical skill set. Item 7.3, what time is it? 6:40, we're good, right? Everybody good? Crankin? Mr. Womack, you are up. The 2024 Town of Truckee Emergency Operations Plan. Take it away, sir. We haven't seen you in many months. Welcome back. Thank you. Yes, it is usually.
Sorry, microphone. Actually, I have to change a slide here because I realized I didn't add something to my presentation that would have made it much more difficult for you guys to deal with at the end. In other words, I didn't have the resolution part.
I'm learning.
All right. Mayor, council members, yeah, we're here tonight to finally update the emergency operations plan for the town of Truckee. This was first adopted in 2007, formally by the council. Since then, we've done some other edits, but not a new adoption. So tonight, we're bringing this forward. Also, at the same time, we're doing a municipal code update, mainly because that also has not been updated since the town's incorporation. We did a slight amendment in 2018 to bring us into compliance with some state laws. But we are doing a complete update, really a rewrite tonight. It changes the title from disaster relief to emergency services, really following what is happening in emergency services and has been for quite a few years. We're moving from civil defense disaster more to a concept of Office of Emergency Services. Way back when in the day, even well before I was around, civil defense was what started everything that emergency services has become. Add several emergencies for which the EOC may be activated following the current list put out by the state of California. And it also simplifies our emergency services council and the whole process. If you read the one it's replacing, I've read it several times, and I'm still confused as to exactly what it wants us to do and what it expects to be done. So the plan itself comes in two parts. There's a base plan that establishes the emergency management organization for the town, identifies the responsibilities of personnel involved in emergency management, and it gives us our operational concepts when responding to large-scale emergencies. As a town, there's field responsibility that is not really included in this other than to mention that they have a role at the lowest level. Part two is actually the Emergency Operations Center Management. It defines when to activate the EOC and at what level. We, in the old plan, would activate anytime we had a winter storm watch. So we would be activated currently because that's coming. So we changed that a little bit and made it much more realistic to what we do. Defines the role of the Emergency Operations Center in our emergency management system. And one of the best parts is it provides job aids for each position in the EOC. There probably are 100-plus positions. So if we had to activate something that is fairly obscure, but for whatever reason needed, we have a job aid. We could hand that to somebody, and they would be able to be able to fulfill their role from that. Going forward, we'll have training for our Emergency Operations Center section chiefs. So at the four levels, operations, finance, planning, and logistics, we will select some folks to receive training and going forward so that they can fulfill those roles in the EOC. We'll update our alert and warning and evacuation annexes. And as I mentioned in the questions, alert and warning is completed. It's been circulated as soon as this is adopted. Really, that will be available. We will create, going forward in the future, a continuity of government, continuity of operations, and animal care annexes. Basically, continuity of government is just if the really, really bad thing happens and we have to start using people other than our normal, you know, I hate to say this, town manager, mayor, somebody's missing. We have a process to continue government. I hate to think that's kind of what I do. Continuity of operations, again, if the building disappeared, government still needs to continue on, and so that exists. Our animal care annex really is already done. Animal Service has done a phenomenal job of putting a process in place and a whole bunch of procedures. If that becomes necessary, we just need to formalize that. We'll go back and look at the need for shelter, damage and recovery annexes. Those usually are considered in big towns. But when we realize that we can't really shelter people here very well, we have a whole process that we need to look at in terms of where we're going and interstate and mutual aid agreements like that. And we are working to update the IT and AV in the Emergency Operations Center, the Prosser Room. The bonus to that is it will give us a meeting room that is a little bit larger than what we currently have with good audio visual. And we're currently working with IT and Chris Hardy and his staff on that. So with that in mind, the recommended action is to introduce Ordinance 2024-10, updating municipal code section 2.50, and approve the update of the 2024 Emergency Operations Plan.
You didn't go through every chapter?
I promised five minutes. I don't know how close I came.
Thank you for that, for all that you do here. Planning for, you know, no gen is one hard feat. I don't, I don't know.
I'm not, no, that's why I hate even thinking about it, so.
Any questions from the dais? Councilmember Romack, anything from you?
No, very robust plan. So we know you worked very hard.
Councilmember Clovestad?
Yeah, I, thank you very much. This has been such a long time coming. I remember the moment when we decided, we almost had a plan approved, and we decided to wait. And you circulated it to, the name of the agency is?
Office of Access and Functional Needs with the state.
And so I'm just curious, what specifically did they add or change or amend?
They don't necessarily add or change anything into it. They make some recommendations. Really, what they want to see is whether or not we have used whole community planning. In our case, we went out to see our community house. We used our co-ad manager. We looked at things like the Meals on Wheels program and other places where we tried to get feedback. We worked with the Primatoras. Some places we got feedback, some we didn't get anything. But we tried, and that was what they really wanted to see us do.
All right. And in the plan, it shows how we have redundant systems and we have a structure for reconvening our leadership should some of us not be available. So, but what happens if we can't activate any of our emergency operations centers in Truckee? What happens then?
So that will be part of the continuity of operations. And what we would have to look at is where do we go offsite? Do we go to the county facility and, you know, reconvene there in a room there, basically? Or do we look at something farther away like Placer County? Some of the stuff, I mean, you can, as far away as you need to be safe, but that you have the ability to go. So we would like to stay in county.
Right. But you practice with the county regularly, so you know their facilities and manage.
Right.
Operating out of there.
Right.
And I'm sure it's in the report somewhere. Forgive me for not having found it, but how often do you practice these emergency operations center activations?
Most of us recently, and this is industry-wide, have not been doing a lot of practicing because we're activated so much that there hasn't been a reason to practice. Funny, Tall Forest Hospital's got the same thing going on. They are, don't have to do a lot of practicing because they have real-world activations to do things.
So there's something in this policy that says, well, if you've activated in the last six months, you don't need to do this scheduled practice.
Yeah, generally, best practice is to do it about yearly. And we do have an emergence exercise coming up in April where we will activate the EOC along with, it's in a command post, and they'll work in conjunction.
I think maybe to clarify for anybody that's listening, maybe Bobby can define some situations that we've activated recently. And we're not having major crises that we're activating, but, you know, significant weather events. Do you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, predominantly this year, actually going back to 2023, it was really the winter weather last year was our last major activations. We did not see red flag issues this summer, so we didn't activate. That is a reason we would activate, lowest levels.
Red flag warnings and possible shutdowns.
Right. So lowest level activations there, but we would activate.
Great. Thank you so much. Excellent work.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie, any questions for Mr. Womack?
Right. Have you done any practice activations where simulating an evacuation of Tahoe Donner? Or do you have plans to do any?
I think that's kind of maybe a two-part question. I have tons of simulations of evacuating Tahoe Donner. And all variety, one of the things we have is LaDrift as a program. I mean, we can change inputs, and I run all sorts of different things depending on what we want to look at. The Emergency Operations Center. The emergency operations center is not where the evacuation will come from. That will come from the incident command post. So they're kind of two different things.
Okay, have you tested the simulation on the ground in any fashion?
Yes, in a kind of a backwards way. Um, we look at the number of vehicles we see at July 4th and the time it takes to clear the West End Beach, and we run that against simulations that we have for that area and they're very close. So I, the extrapolation is that it will work in Tahoe Donner similarly. Um, that's always a question you have and, and everybody has it. Did it, could you run a simulation for South Tahoe and see exactly what they saw? If you could build it exactly to what they saw in the Caldor Fire, you would probably have a very close evacuation time.
Okay, are there any plans to actually put personnel on, on the ground in spots to practice an evacuation?
There are no plans currently. Everyone that I've seen done, nobody evacuates or it's 10 or 15 people.
Yeah.
Um, not that that isn't a good thing, but it doesn't really, all it does is increase public awareness, which is certainly very good. There's a lot of other ways to do that. Um, actual evacuations, I just recently, uh, last fall did one in Incline and, again, it was 10 or 15 people and they went up and actually walked two whole subdivision, or two whole neighborhoods and only got 10 people, 10 or 15 people to leave.
If I wanted to see how, what the interagency action is in responding to a, a hazardous spill from a, a train, where would I go to find that?
I, I apologize, I'm not really sure I understand what you're asking.
If I wanted to understand what the plan is for responding to a hazardous spill off a train, where would I go to see what the plan is for addressing that?
Within the town of Truckee?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, no, I understand.
Just making clear.
I get that. That initial, again, that's different than an emergency operations center. Um, that would be an incident command post first responders. Um, and basically that is fire and their best practices to deal with. And, and it really is going to depend on what the spill is.
And what would be the town's role? Does it depend on the type of spill?
The town's role likely comes later. Um, yeah, it depends on the spill, depends on whether or not what it's, you know, impinging upon in the town. Um, with the rail line as close to the river as it is, in all likelihood, it's going to be the Office of Spill Prevention and Response, OSPR from the state. Um, that's one of those things that pretty quickly we are going to step out of and let them handle because of the enormous amount of costs, extreme cost in there. We would be a supporting agency, but we would not be a responding agency.
Things like traffic control or evacuation assistance, those types of things.
Okay, and where is their response team? Do you know how close they are to Truckee? OSPR.
OSPR is coming out of Sacramento for the most part, but I, I don't think they have teams prepositioned.
Okay.
I mean, we, we have in 2015, we created a, uh, crew by rail hazardous, uh, materials response plan. Well, I think a lot of what you're asking is in there and, and to, uh, the town managers' comments, yeah, that's, we're going to be responsible for traffic control. Um, really the rest of it is going to be at a much higher level.
The state level?
Yes.
Okay.
State and actually the Coast Guard.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
No questions, thank you.
Um, my only question, Bob, this is a jurisdictional requirement that we've done at this point, or this was an optional, um, exercise?
We are required by the Emergency Services Act to have an emergency operations plan. Um, it is the only plan I know of that does not have a requirement for update.
Right.
That's why, and you can go and find, most agents, most jurisdictions are really out of date.
Right, well, I, I just want to, you know, thank you, um, for your service on all of this. I, I believe where I was going was how unique is it that we have this in a very updated current fashion, I guess is more the question. What percentage of jurisdictions would you guess, um, have something as robust as, as what we're putting on the table tonight?
People are finally getting around to it because they're so old. Most of them were built in 2007, there was a requirement then. Um, and they were off, everybody took them off the same shelf. So most of them now, but I hesitate to say, I'm not sure the counties is updated yet.
Right.
I think there's, they may have a 2016, but it is older than that too.
Great, thank you, appreciate your work. Uh, with that, we will open up this item for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a comment, step on up to the podium, make sure the light is green, state your name and keep an eye on the timer to your right. You have three minutes. Is your, is your, is your mic on, Mike? Is your mic on, Mike? It is? Okay, keep going. Yeah. No, that's okay.
Uh, to support this measure, obviously, but I'm very concerned, uh, and have been for a while about, uh, well, ever since last year. We all recall the East Palestine, Ohio incident. And the first thing I saw on the news, the first thing I thought of was what if that happens in Truckee? And hearing tonight, I'm consoled to some extent that we understand what we have to do. The question is, do we have, how fast is that response team going to act? We got to call Sacramento, it's the middle of the night, we don't know what's going on. And meanwhile, uh, meanwhile, if we replicate what happened in East Palestine, it's just, it's the train caught fire, there was all kinds of dense smoke and particulate matter was dispersed through the whole town. Many people had to be evacuated and it took forever. It took forever to respond to that. So I'm very, very concerned about that. So let's, let's go back for a second. The Federal Railroad Administration reports that as of October of last year through October, there were 742 incident reports of train derailments in the U S. This doesn't get a lot of press because we're worried about other issues. Uh, in all of 2022, the year before, there were about 1,300 such incidents. And California is not immune from derailments, ranking as the fourth highest among all states. Uh, hazardous materials and toxic chemicals have to be transported, we know that. While transporting them via train is considered to be the safest mode of transportation, it certainly isn't perfect. Since 2021, 334 trains have derailed in Calif, uh, in California with four, four having hazardous material spill. Truckee has somewhere between, and I, this may be dated, but, um, I, I read online, 15 to 25 trains traversing our city limits each day. So there are real risks. I mentioned all this to, tonight to raise awareness of the potential we face if a derailment occurs in our downtown area with potential risk to our citizens who live in the immediate area. And of additional concern is the dramatic impact any derailment would have to the Truckee River and its ecosystem and our economy, not to mention. So I guess the question I'm asking tonight is, can we ask these questions to get some answers that we feel comfortable with? Cause it's really a matter from a town council's perspective of risk management. And your responsibility as a council member to all of our citizens to make sure we've done everything we can to mitigate any potential risk. So that's, um, so risk management's real, uh, really what it's all about. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate your comments. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none? No? Okay. Uh, closing public comment, um, I'll bring it back for deliberation, uh, just, Mike, we appreciate your comments very much. Um, it's a very, um, I think as council members, Brisky, some of his questions we're, we're getting at, there's all sorts of, um, uh, different things going on and agencies who are going to be responsible. And maybe Mr. Womack has, has a more formal, uh, agreeable reply to that statement.
Well, I'll, I'll say I completely agree with his comments. It is a conversation we have both, um, locally with the fire district, which would have really the, the response to the spill. They have had to look at what their resources are and what they can put in terms of specialized. So that does mean that our local hazmat team, uh, probably comes from Colfax, uh, now. And so that, but when you're talking about a rail car, your local hazmat team is, is probably not equipped, um, to really make any, um, large scale, you know, means to somehow reduce the impact. Um, in terms of, you know, there's other things out there. We have a Truckee River, uh, spell response plan that has been developed by La Hantin Water, uh, talks about booming and diking and doing some other things with the river. I've certainly had these conversations with the folks in Nevada because they realize anything goes in that river is going to impact their water, uh, all of their drinking water. But to that point, we are in a rural environment where it's going to take a while to get help here, um, and to be able to deal with it and, and to the point of something downtown. Unfortunately, that's what keeps me up at night is, you know, wildfire is a big deal, but the rail line, uh, and the pipeline that is underneath it are both very, very high risk.
I wasn't going to bring that up, you know, cause that's just going to ask more questions out there.
You know, if I can just, um, add on a little bit to that, I think it's important to recognize that we, we realize the amount of work in this area. I mean, it's clearly a council priority and community priority, um, but having Bob in his position as a designated person in a, in a lot of areas that aren't in our span of control, right? So we're trying to facilitate, understand, um, develop plans. And then we, we do have a, um, additional person starting in a few weeks to provide additional capacity in this area. So we're continuing to try to evolve and grow and, um, be at the table where we can offer assistance.
Yeah, and I think that's really important and, and I would even further that we have a, um, meeting coming up at the end of February about emergency response with all three of the cities, Nevada City Grass Valley, Town of Truckee, along with the county, a joint meeting of all the elected officials and staffs and everything about emergency response. Yes, wildfire will be a big topic, but, um, there'll be other topics on the agenda as well. So I, I think there's no comforting answer and there's no silver bullet, um, in any of these scenarios, and that's why we have these plans. And that's really what these plans are meant to do is mitigate as best as possible and, and plan for, um, what might happen as a series of events occur. So, you know, that's, that's the answer we're going to get tonight and, and hopefully, um, we'll continue to work in this field and, and make progress there. Uh, any further deliberation? Yeah, please, yeah.
So Bob, if we were trying to get a hazmat unit in Reno that could come up here, should we be talking with the federal government or with the state of Nevada? Or, or based on your experience, can you just give me your best idea? Or do you, is it too much speculation?
I'm trying to step through a landmine here. Um, the state of California, California Office of Emergency Services has a hazmat section. Uh, they would prefer to use hazmat teams from California.
Thank you. Yes. Sounds great.
That's, that's like a do for you.
Um, anybody else have anything they'd like to add? If not, uh, I'd love to entertain a motion. Or what are we doing? We are introducing an ordinance, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2024 dash 10 to update municipal code section 2.50, emergency services and approve the update of the 2024 emergency operations plan.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thanks for your work, Bob. Uh, appreciate it.
Yeah. I probably got something off the list.
Yeah, awesome. Uh, with that, we will head into council reports. Anybody ready? You ready, councilmember Henderson?
Yes, I can do it. Okay, so I think my most exciting one was I got to meet with three Boy Scout troops right here in Chambers, along with, uh, Director David Diamond and Supervisor Hardy Bullock. They were all incredibly engaged. Their primary concern was related to litter. Um, I told them about our recent adoption of a ban on single-use water bottles, of course not in effect yet, but they were incredibly excited about that. Um, lots of questions on, you know, what, what do you all actually do? So we talked about local government and what it means and talked a lot about just infrastructure and, and the town plows the roads and, you know, things like that. They asked some tough questions, hardest part of the job, best part of the job. So we talked a little bit about that. And I wanted to share, they expressed interest in future service projects related to council priorities, which I thought was really, really amazing. Um, just shows how engaged our youth really can be when we make the space for that. Um, so, so one specific example they had was, well, when you do have that ban on plastic water bottles, we would love to come to the events and hand out all of the sustainable, very high quality water bottles, um, branded, how, whatever, which way we go with that. Um, so I just thought that that was really, really amazing and we should make sure we continue to cultivate those connections with our youth. Um, okay, just a couple others. Um, big one, last week I spent three days at a conference focused on energy, um, lots and lots of insights on electric vehicles, on decarbonization, um, how do you actually, you know, engage people in energy efficiency and a lot more. And then had some one-on-one meetings with different constituents, um, including related to some questions about just some of our code, code compliance, things like that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Zabriskie.
I attended the North Tahoe Truckee Transportation Management Association at the beginning of the month. The board approved an R F P to, uh, survey regional commuters about their needs and to help determine future direction of van pool use on the north shore of Tahoe. Cal Nava, um, developers made a presentation that, on their redevelopment and opening of Cal Nava, they're planning to have 40 cabins, um, for people to stay in and they're saying that's to compete with the condominium rentals. And then they'll be having 200 hotel rooms. And so I think a lot of community members there hoping that helps alleviate some of the S T R pressure, moving, moving visitors back into hotels and other forms of lodging. And then, uh, then at a Firewise Community Meeting where, uh, for Prosser Lake View where they're discussing their action plan for this summer, how to reduce fire risk in that community. The River Revitalization Committee, um, talked about primarily, I, I would say for the benefit of the councils, about setting up action. Essentially subcommittees, we're calling them action teams, because they'll have action items to carry out. Like one group would do economic analysis and redevelopment design, another would look at river health and access. Another one would be focusing on outreach to local, uh, business and property owners and that sort of thing. So that's kind of where we are now, is setting up action teams, um, that are going to specialize in different aspects of the revitalization. And then the Nevada County Transportation Commission adopted a legislative platform to guide future legislative activity, um, advocacy before the state. That includes advocating for a prioritization of planning solutions from the Nevada state line to the top of the summit, and then also along the resort triangle. Increasing funding for active transportation programs, which essentially means non-motorized programs, um, amending state laws to make it easier to get encroachment permits for emergency access on state roads. And then allowing local jurisdictions to lower speeds where necessary, again, on, uh, state roads. Basically, the legislative platform is very much in alignment with our, um, town policies for transportation, which is very nice to see. And, uh, so we should be able to piggyback off one another. And then they have a carbon reduction program funding of a hundred thousand dollars for local workforce, people who live in Washoe, essentially developing, helping to fund van pools to bring groups of workers up here rather than having them drive in their individual
And you attended our one-day council.
And you attended our one-day council retreat.
Thank you for that reminder.
You're welcome. Councilmember Close Dad?
I really appreciate those details on the legislative platform and the River Revitalization Committee, so thank you. Um, so I had a couple of email exchanges with Ashley Perkins about the benches. And, um, I know it's not on our agenda, so I'm just going to state my excitement about that program and how I think it's, um, it's been really successful in diverting thousands of pounds of very hard-to-recycle types of plastic. So, um, if there are any opportunities for the town to utilize some of their benches, I would be very supportive of it. I also sat in on a meeting with Eric Sutton about the West River Park and had a couple other brief conversations with other constituents about the same. Um, did a presentation to the Lift Climate Hub social and, uh, group and about the Climate Transformation Alliance. And I've, I've been to a few of those before and the number of people that attended this one was twice anything I'd ever seen. And of course, they had the most technical, um, contemplative, well-thought-out questions. They're, uh, they're really, uh, amazing group of individuals doing amazing work throughout our community and the world. So it was a real honor to present to them and, um, got a really fantastic response. And I think we got a few more charters signed that night. Um, and then I've been meeting with SBC and some other of the governing partners of the CTA in preparation for a strategic planning session that, um, that Jan is going to attend, um, with me in representation of the council. Thank you very much. And, um, I'm looking forward to that and just trying to be as prepared. And yes, the retreat, the one-day retreat was fantastic with all of y'all.
Attended the one-day retreat with all y'all. We missed you, Councilmember Henderson, uh, but it was a pleasure hanging out.
I missed you all too.
Yes.
My greens are not fun.
We were sorry, yes. Um, great day. Um, River Revitalization Steering Committee with Councilmember Zabriski. I did want to also highlight, we did get into a discussion on how this committee is really moving, focusing on revitalization, which includes relocation, but also includes revitalization of businesses and not relocating everyone. Um, so did just want to daylight this to the committee because I think some people heard conversations in our general plan process. So to make everyone aware that revitalization is really the focus, which again includes all possibilities. Um, so sharing that, but that group is just phenomenal and, um, Tim Rupert is a committee member. He made some comments that afterwards I said, I wish we had that on film, um, just some great comments, you know, from a community member. We don't hear from that often, but really talking about Truckee and revitalization and being a longtime community member and being a part of the committee. So I just really appreciate all the people on the committee. Um, also attended, uh, today, uh, part of the, uh, Truckee Chamber of Commerce monthly board meeting. Uh, Hillary provided some updates, but it was my first chance to kind of sit in as the alternate now. Um, and just a great opportunity to hear a little bit from them. Uh, they briefly touched on, you know, the, the changes and now the transit hub being where it is and not at the train station and what impacts that's having in downtown. So excited to hear more about as that develops. Um, and then one other fact today, in a meeting I was at for my job, for Placer County, but I just found it interesting, Palisades Tahoe shared that this past weekend, there were more than 500 rides on their parking ride. That includes both from Tahoe City and Truckee. Um, but just incredible that, uh, people are utilizing that service. So I thought that was a fact we would all appreciate hearing. So that was, that was it to report.
I, I think there are also, the SCU's are just going to do an update at the CCC meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, mentioned that. Um, my daughter took the parking ride last weekend, actually, said it was great. And, uh, at the CCC meeting tomorrow morning, um, uh, I believe you've all, you all get those emails. There did be both, uh, update from the, um, town manager and, uh, Allison Lehman, Nevada County CEO, along with an update from the resorts, um, along the lines of a little bit what I provided last time. Uh, and I have nothing new to report. The retreat, I joined the conversation with Eric Sutton. Um, had a few other random conversations around town and, uh, didn't attend any other formal meeting, so thank you. Uh, with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session, uh, after we take a, at least a five-minute, maybe a 10-minute, um, quick break. Yeah. Thank you.